To the City Council, it's April 19th. If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You're welcome. Glad to see you all here tonight. We appreciate you being here. We need to start with a roll call. Ms. Harris, will you help us with that?
Sure. Everyone is present, we have a call.
Excellent, thank you. We have an agenda before us. Is there any changes to that agenda or discussion before we move on with that? If there is not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ottley seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? We have an agenda. We need to consider the Council, the City Council minutes for April 5th. Any discussion regarding those minutes? If not, we will acknowledge those as they've been prepared and we'll move on to the work session minutes for April 12th. Same thing there. Any questions or concerns, comments? If not, we'll acknowledge those as well and we'll go on to the bills. We've got a warrant register with today's date on it. Any questions or comments concerned regarding that? If there is none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Lynch with a motion. Mr. Perks, you're going to second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any question on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of the bills. We've got a revenue and expenditure report for March. Questions, comments, concerns regarding that revenue and expenditure report?
Like everyone's being wise with the money.
That's a good thing. Let's see, is there a motion to approve that report? Mr. Sellers with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Welling seconding. Any discussion? Discussion? There's no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That takes care of that. Thank you. Council comments. Mr. Lynch, what do you have for us tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Mr. Ottley.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling.
I don't have a lot to say tonight. Thank you for passing the time to Mr. Sellers.
Mr. Sellers?
I just remind everybody that there's a free concert by the Evanston Orchestra and Choir Thursday night at 7:00 PM at Davis Middle School. It's nice to see us getting back to some normal activities in the community again with the COVID stuff. I don't think masks are required. And then also, we've had a few things happen in our community with drugs and overdoses and so just be mindful of people who you see around that might be struggling. That's all I have.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Welling? Nothing? Nothing? Okay, well, I don't know that I have anything to add. I'll just echo what's been said and we'll move on to public hearings and special orders. I do need to make one, I guess, change in those appointments that hopefully people will, the council will be in agreement of. Just a quick history, I guess. Rich Clover, who has been serving on the Airport Joint Powers Board, has resigned from that board and is moving, as I understand, to Nevada, which is what facilitated his resignation, was his moving away. He's been on that board for a long time and has served us very well. We appreciate his service there very much. In anticipation of that, I was told that I could expect a letter from an individual, Mr. Larson, Don Larson, who would be willing to serve on that board. That letter was delayed. He never wrote me the letter. So we were getting a little bit concerned to make sure that we could fill that board and so that would, the board would be appropriately staffed, I guess. So in anticipation of that, when we got a little nervous, I, we kind of mentioned it to some members of the council. Mr. Perks here expressed a willingness to serve on that board, which I appreciate very much. In the meantime, I got a letter from Mr. Larson expressing a willingness to serve. So, long story short, Mr. Perks and I talked about it this morning and he suggested that we consider an appointment of Mr. Larson to that board and relieve Mr. Perks of that responsibility. He said we could still be friends if we did that, so.
That would get a better man.
I don't know about that. I would be willing to appoint either one. I know that Mr. Perks is already, you know, well yoked as far as city boards and city services go, so if we change in midstream here maybe and consider Mr. Don Larson for our joint powers board. And again, I have no problem whatsoever with Mr. Perks being on that and I think Mr. Larson would also serve well on that joint powers board. And so with our appointments, I guess what I would do is entertain a motion to appoint Don Larson to the Airport Joint Powers Board for a three-year term to end January of 2023 and then at the same time, I would bring forth the name of Jill Bass to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Adjustments for a three-year term to end January of 20, this says January 2025, if that, that would be correct. The 2023, was that, is that what Mr. Larson would fill?
Because he replaced.
So his term would end, we've got that right. So that term would end in January 2023. That's Mr. Larson and Jill Bass on the Planning, Zoning and Board of Adjustments for a term to end January 2025. And I have no problem with addressing these together unless somebody else has some other feelings. I'll entertain a motion of that effect if somebody.
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Ottley with a motion. Mr. Lynch seconding. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And is there any opposed? Okay, well, we'll appreciate Mr. Larson's service on the joint powers board and Ms. Bass on the, Bass on the Planning, Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments. We appreciate their willingness to help us in those efforts. We will go on to our consent agenda item. We've got four items there, a couple of parade route requests, an open container permit, a street closure permit. Would you like to address those? Do we need to have any kind of a, we don't have to have any, I see Mr. Bowe getting the microphone there. We don't know that we have to have any, any public hearings. How would you like to address those? Separately or together or what's your pleasure?
Together.
Together.
Unless there's people who want to talk about it.
Is any of these particular requests from the VFW, the downtown Evanston, has a couple, and then the Alpha and Omega Motorcade across America, is there any one here from those particular efforts that would like to address the council tonight for any reason? Let us know, please. Well, Mika, speak up. Come up and tell us what's going on. I don't know why I didn't see you over there sitting in the corner. You're supposed to be up here front so we can see that, know you're here. Please, tell us what's going on, Mika.
Okay, what we have going on, we have a new promotion in downtown Evanston and that is the Schools Out, Summers In. And what we're going to do with that, it's going to be similar to the Hunters Widows Night Out. We'll have a little booklet and people can do shopping with participating businesses in the downtown and fill out the booklet and have a chance to win some Main Street cash with that. And we'll also have a kids' corner in the First Bank parking lot with some rock painting and some hula hooping and bubbles and other games. And that should hopefully draw some more folks downtown and see all the businesses that we have. The other one is for, the road closure is for the crosswalk painting and that will be this Sunday. We're going to try to do four crosswalks there at the corner of 10th and Main Street and that's part of the AARP grant that we received last year. So that was with the swing tables or parklets that are going to come out tomorrow, actually. So with the great effort of our facilities team that put those together. So that will happen on Sunday from noon to 5:00.
Excellent.
Where's the parklet's going to go?
So they are going to be in our downtown. We'll have one at the Roundhouse and Rail Yards and we'll have one at Depot Square and then on the corner of 10th and Main in the First Bank parking lot. And then we'll have one down near the library as well.
Oh, nice. Okay. Swinging.
Yes, they're really kind of swaying. You can't do a lot of swinging, but yes.
Well, I appreciate that. Excellent. Well, thank you. Any questions for Mika before we move forward with this?
Just thank you for taking on this.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Anything else we need to know? If anybody else, want any on this, other projects or other requests? Look pretty much straightforward to me even. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Mr. Sellers seconding. Any discussion?
I just got one.
Please, go ahead.
On our thing on the parade route, the Alpha and Omega doesn't have a date and I can see it's on June 5th.
Oh.
In case the public wants to know.
It is on June 5th.
Good catch. I saw it on that, but I didn't on the agenda here. Okay. Any further discussion? If there's no discussion, further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That approves our consent agenda. Thank you. We will go to new, unfinished business and we'll begin there with ordinance 2202. Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, this ordinance of the city approves and authorizes a zone change for property in the city of Evanston from agricultural established to highway business developing as requested by Equine Capital Network LLC.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson, please.
Yes, so this is the area that's proposed for the zone change. It's approximately a quarter acre located just south of Prospector Drive, the Porter's Fireworks and west of Overthrust Road. The proposed zone change is from highway business, or agricultural established that it currently is, to highway business developing. I don't have anything new that we haven't already gone through during first and second reading. I would like to add that for the amendment to the city's comprehensive plan and that resolution will be on the next meeting's agenda. So if, I'll open it up for questions, anyone from the public or a council.
Any questions for Mr. Jacobson? And you say nothing has changed in the wording of this ordinance, our ordinance, through the first or second reading? It's the same.
Nothing has changed.
If I look at it, it seems to be the same. I don't see any changes in it.
Now, we're just hearing the zone change request. There's been a few people in the public sector or private sector that's had some questions. You will still be hearing that at the planning zoning when the land developer decides to move forward? Will the public be aware of that?
It kind of depends on how the developer proceeds forward. There could be a subdivision involved of the land. There's multiple uses that are being proposed. So if they propose a subdivision, you might see something again with the planning commission as well as the city council. They may proceed forward with a PUD, Planned Unit Development Proposal for the entire piece. That may or may not involve a subdivision as well, but that process would also involve the planning commission and city council. So there would be additional opportunities for input.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Jacobson? I guess I'll, and maybe you mentioned it, 22, I'll just open this up. I know that it's possible that this could be thought to have some questions from the public. Is there anyone here from the public that would like, that has questions or has comments would like to say something regarding this particular decision that we need to make here tonight? Okay. We, what, I'm sorry.
It's a quiet crowd.
It's a quiet crowd. It's mic'd here.
Oh, well, when Mr. Paxton walks in the door, we all fall, we all fall silent, so we appreciate that. But, you know, this is a big decision and there's no sense in not addressing that or not recognizing that. This is a big decision. This is a big decision for the people that are considering doing something on this particular property. This is a big decision for the city. There's no big decision for those selling the property, those buying the property or potentially selling or buying. So there's no sense in not recognizing that and this certainly has implications for the community as a whole. And so if there's someone here that would like to address, you know, in whatever way they want to, I would like them to feel the ability to do that. We don't want to do anything, we do everything we do out in the open. And so if someone has some questions or comments, I would certainly welcome that, so. But, so if there is none, we'll certainly move forward. Is there anything else we need to consider from you, Mr. Jacobson? Do you have anything more to add or whatever?
I can't think of anything else.
Okay, well, this is an ordinance, obviously, and so I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2202 on third and final reading.
I'll make the motion to approve 2202.
I'll second.
Mr. Welling, or Mr. Sellers with a motion to approve. Mr. Welling seconding. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on third and final reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jacobson, thank you for everybody involved. We appreciate it very much.
If you don't mind, I'll address it. Just wanted to make sure we had the vote in first, so.
Okay, please.
Where we're at today, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're clear. We're going to close on the property on before June 15th.
Okay.
And so I'll be working with Mike on that. But in getting up to this point right now, last week I had 30 people in from around the country for this project here. And so they're in Las Vegas there and it's a little bigger group than I'd anticipated, but once one comes and you got two coming and it was very positive. We had a lot of positive and real, real sharp folks that are involved in this project, not necessarily from the financial aspect of it, but more for the rodeo side of it. So we had producers that produce properties down at South Point, the National Finals and Wickenburg that were there. They were going to be our producers on some areas and then we had some construction folks there. And one of the interesting things though is we had Amptow from the East Coast came out and they demonstrated how they would paramutual wager on rodeo events. Now, unfortunately, I've been around here so long that I think it was in 2002, I put on a rodeo event in Laramie. It was the Hyde Merritt Program rodeo event and it went off real well and we were going to do something, but one thing led to another and here we are 20 years later. But this summer, we're putting in 40 RV pads out at the racetrack right now. Hopefully Travis is still out there working because you know it's already at work, I know. So, but anyway, we're putting the 40 new pads out there, but we're anticipating, and we've already bought the outdoor arena, to do a staging at the end of August and have a professional rodeo event out at the track, just so we can test a lot of the areas that will go into this production center here. And so that's going to happen at the end of August. I don't know if it's going to be two or four days or two weekends. It'll definitely happen after the races. We start June 4th and if you guys know me, I always got to plug the racetrack. And so anyway, so the racetrack starts June 4th. It's 20 days. We're real excited about it. We're setting records on our purses of 1.4 million. We're going to have plenty of horses. We've got them already calling us from different parts of the country. Some of the small tracks have closed this year, unfortunately. There's different things that added up to that. So we're real excited about putting on an event at the Wyoming Downs. We've got to get paramutual commission approval, but that is going to be part of this program here. So hopefully early next spring when we start to break ground and I'm hoping it's next year, not two years out, but everything's slow. But things are going really well and I wanted to thank you folks very, very much for taking this under consideration and we'll be up here ample time and I'll be working with Rocco to make sure everybody's fully informed and we'll give monthly updates as we move along.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them at any time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go on to ordinance 2203. Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, this ordinance of the city amends section 2-12 boards of chapter 2 administration to adjust the city's ward boundaries to more closely align with the revised boundaries of the voting districts enacted by the Wyoming Legislature.
Thank you. I know that our county clerk has attended in previous meetings when we talked about this. I think that she was kind of tied up with some county commission meetings today, but there's no changes in this at all that we can.
No, that's correct.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2203 on second reading. Mr. Sellers with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Lynch seconding. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is approved on second reading. We'll go on to new business and we'll start there with resolution 2223. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of a subcontract with the Wyoming Division of Criminal Investigation is to provide funds to the Evanston Police Department for a high intensity drug trafficking area.
Thank you, sir. Chief Francis, please.
Yes, sir. This is, we utilize this funding, their contract is a little slow coming out from DCI this year. This actually goes from January 1st to December 31st of this year and we utilize it to fund our task force officer that's part of our investigation division that's assigned to the DCI task force and it will fund up to $57,071 of his salary with a total award of $77,046, considering the $19,975 covers overtime payments to the individual working that position.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief before we move on with this? Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Welling seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. And we'll go on to resolution 2224. Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of an amendment to the agreement with Forstgrun Associates to provide engineering and construction management services for the 18th, 19th Street and West Summit Waterline Replacement Project.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening. We already have, are working on the water line replacement engineering aspect of replacing the water lines on 18th and 19th Street. And through that work and through other stuff, we realized that we needed to add this section between Harrison and Uena to make 18th Street complete. We thought we had the line there, but it comes all the way to Harrison, so we just need to, this is an amendment to that agreement to make that change.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense, okay. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass, Your Honor.
Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Welling seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Now, okay, 22, resolution 2225. You threw me off there for a minute. I guess you're going to stay there for this one, aren't you?
The rest of it's on me, so I'll just stand here if that's all.
Sounds good. Resolution 2225. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of a planned maintenance agreement and addendum with Cummings, Inc. It's to provide maintenance for electric generators used by the city.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
This is our annual agreement with Cummings to do our load testing and maintenance, preventive maintenance on our backup generators at both treatment plants and at South Creek Dam and at the PD.
Looks like it's the same as years previous.
Yeah, contract's same, price is a little more, just like everything else.
Everything else, yeah. Okay. Is there introduction on this resolution? Mr. Lynch with a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ottley seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Resolution 2226. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, the resolution, this is a resolution of the city authorizing the execution of a joint funding agreement with the US Geological Survey, United States Department of Interior for the operation and maintenance of a stream gauge station on the Bear River.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson.
This string gauge station is right over here on County Road by Rips. Measures the flow of the river. We use it quite often to monitor the gate, or to monitor the river and to watch for flood stage type things. In the past, not so much recently, but it's used to gauge the river and we entered into agreement with USGS to fund that station. That's what this agreement is.
Okay. Any questions on this before we move forward with it?
What's the thing on Holland Drive? Is that this? The lights?
No, that's, that's also flood gauge area. The little light and alarm if it hits a certain level. When that happens, we can have flooding down to North Evanston. Separate gauges.
Don't want to wish a flood on us, but given our last couple of years, it wouldn't be a.
A little extra water.
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be a bad thing. Could be a good problem. Is there introduction on this resolution? Mr. Welling with a motion. Is there? Mr. Sellers seconding. Any discussion? There's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Resolution 2227. Mr. Bowe, you read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of an agreement with M&amp;K Striping to stripe crosswalks, stop bars, parking lots, downtown parking and curbs in the city of Evanston.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson.
This is our annual street painting, striping project that we do. M&amp;K will do the stop bars and parking and parking lots and just all the painting we need to do around town for the streets.
Seems like we have to do a little painting every year.
Yes.
I wonder if, is that just the weather or are they, are they doing?
Just wears off.
Pretty harsh winter to try to get the paint to last too long, I guess.
Yep, just wears off.
Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Perks with a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Lynch seconding. Any discussion? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Resolution 2226. Mr. Bowe, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of an agreement with Premier Striping to stripe edge and center lines in the city of Evanston.
Thank you. I think I said 2026. I meant 2028. I guess so. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson.
Same thing. This different company has to do the long lines, different equipment. So, yeah, the long lines like County Road, Overthrust, Yellow Creek, those that require the truck to come and paint those and that's what this agreement is.
Okay. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Otley with a motion? Mr. Welling seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. 2229. Mr. Bowe, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution in agreement with M&amp;K Striping. It's to do street crack seal in the city of Evanston.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robinson?
And this is our annual work as far as crack sealing goes on some of the streets. They bid this per ton and then we get the best price per ton and actually we only had one bid on it, but it's comparable to what we did last year.
Okay.
And then we'll go as far as we can with the money and tonnage just to crack seal some streets and try and preserve the pavement.
Sounds good. Is there introduction on this resolution?
I'll introduce with the motion to pass.
Mr. Sellers with a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Otley seconding? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved as well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Comments from departments? Do you have anything more for us, Mr. Robinson, while you're right there?
No, I've been, the rez board's about 95% full.
Beautiful.
I think we'll still, here is not often used, let's say in the next couple of weeks.
Fantastic.
Good to hear.
Excellent. Good work. Chief Frannis, do you have anything more for us?
I'll serve up promises to you, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.